I'm calling to order the meeting of the Arlington Select Board for Monday, December 20th, 2021. This is Select Board Chair Steve DeCoursey. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members want to call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Diane Mahan?
Yes, thank you.
John Heard?
Yes.
Glenn Diggins?
Yes.
Eric Helmut?
Yes.
Staff want to call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Adam Chapdeline?
Yes.
Town Council Doug Heim is with us tonight, he's not on the Zoom right now. And Board Administrator Ashley Maher is participating remotely. Tonight's meeting of the Arlington Select Board is being conducted remotely consistent with an act signed into law June 16, 2021, that extends certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency. The act includes an extension until April 1, 2022, of the remote meeting provisions of Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 Executive Order, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. The Governor's Order, which is referenced with Agenda Materials on the town's website for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Before we begin, permit me to offer a few notes. First, this meeting is being conducted via Zoom, is being recorded, and is also being simultaneously broadcast on ACMI. Persons wishing to join the meeting by Zoom may find information on how to do so on the town's website. Persons participating by Zoom are reminded that they may be visible to others, and that if you wish to participate, you are asked to provide your full name in the interest of developing a record of the meeting. All participants are advised that people may be listening who do not provide comment, and those persons are not required to identify themselves. Both Zoom participants and persons watching on ACMI can follow the posted Agenda Materials also found on the town's website using the Novus Agenda Platform. And finally, each vote tonight will be taken by roll call. This is the last scheduled meeting of the Select Board for calendar year 2021. So let's see how much of the town's business we can get done to close out the year. I will now turn to the first item on the agenda, which is an executive session to conduct a strategy session in preparation for contract negotiations with non-union personnel, the town manager, and/or conduct contract negotiations with same, just for the public's benefit. We will, once we take a motion, we will be going into executive session, and we will then have the executive session, we will come back to the public session, and have our regular meeting. I am anticipating that will take place at 7:15. So if I could ask for a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and I'll run the roll. So a motion by Mrs. Mahan, seconded by Mr. Heard. Mr. Helmut?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Heard?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Okay, so we will be leaving this platform, and we will be coming back in 25 minutes or so. I believe everybody is back to the meeting, so welcome back to the Select Board meeting for December 20th, 2021. I am going to take item three out of order, I will take that next on our agenda, which is a vote to ratify the town manager contract, and it says in the agenda, if appropriate, it is appropriate. So I just want to let the public know, we met in executive session. The board took a vote, which I am going to ask that we repeat the vote in public session, and took a vote to approve the town manager's contract for fiscal '22, beginning on February 11, 2022, and running until February 10, 2025. We then invited the town manager into the executive session to complete our negotiation on the contract. So I will start with the motion, and then we may have some comments. I believe Mr. Heard had made the motion, so I guess Mr. Heard to make the motion again.
As the chair, hopefully I can do it more artfully than in executive session. I'll make a motion to approve the town manager's contract as laid out in the parameters that were shared with us by the chair.
Thank you, Mr. Heard, and Mrs. Mahan had the second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and before we open up for discussion, just a summary for the public. We have been talking with the town manager for the past few months, and as public knows, we had a... Earlier this year in the evaluation process, the town manager scored very high. We value his services to the town greatly. We wanted him to come back for another three years, it was a matter of agreeing to terms. We've heard from the town manager this summer about his commitment to Arlington, and through the negotiations that we had that came through loud and clear. So speaking for myself, I'm really happy that he has agreed to do that, and will be with us again going forward. I do want to summarize a few things that what we will do. If we were in the chambers, we'd actually be signing the contract this evening, but because we're by Zoom, we will be doing that over the next day or two, and then we'll be releasing the final contract. We'll make arrangements for members to sign the contract. Once we have a affirmative vote, and the town manager will sign it as well. Just to summarize, we had various categories of compensation in the contract between calendar years 2019 and 2022. They included a base salary, a separate housing allowance, longevity, and there were other items within the contract. This new contract, we will have one item of base salary. The base salary, beginning on February 11, 2022, will be $233,000. There will not be a separate housing allowance, and the longevity is now rolled into the base salary. The town manager has been with us for over 10 years under a default provision in the town bylaws, he was entitled to longevity. We have now taken that. It is not a separate item, town manager agreed to that, it is built in to the base salary. The only other change from the existing contract is that the deferred compensation provision, which was at 5%, is now at 6%. So in the short term, there are some changes that the town manager has agreed to, and I think long term, there are some real benefits to the town manager in terms of staying here in Arlington, and we're really excited about that. So speaking for myself, having worked closely with Adam this past year in particular as the chair, I see the value that he brings to the community and the great job that he does, and also see the great challenges that we have ahead fiscally, with the potential for an override in a couple of years and other challenges. And I know he's up to that task, and so I'm thrilled that he will be joining us. So at this point, before we take the final vote, I'll turn it to other board members if they would like to offer any comments, and I'll start in order of seniority, I'll start with Mrs. Mahan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for really guiding us through this process. Every time I've gone through this, Mr. Chapdeline is, one, two, three, fourth town manager I've had the opportunity to work with, enjoyed three of the five thoroughly, and one with the shortest tenure I did it. One of the things I really continue to value with the town manager is his affect, how he conducts himself, always prepared, respectful, and also willing, you know, when I come in and I'm just ready to butt heads, he's always had an active and responsive conversation with me, and just told me his point of view, and I laid out mine, and there were times one of us changed our minds, usually not, but we definitely got clarity, and I do appreciate that. And so I want to thank the town manager as well as the chair. Thank you, Mr. DeCoursey.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan. Mr. Heard?
Thank you, and I want to thank the chair for your work in this process, and thank the town manager for engaging in really, I think, healthy and productive conversations throughout the contract process. I too am thrilled to have the town manager come back for another three years. I think every time we go to the evaluation process, we talk about how, what a great asset the town manager is for the town of Arlington, and as we know, is very sought after by other municipalities. So it's a privilege and an honor that he decided to stay with Arlington and to renew his contract, and we're really happy about that. I mean, the amount of effort in really just reasonableness that you bring to every issue, I think, real is a huge asset to this town. We don't agree on everything, but just like Mrs. Mahan, I think when, every time we've had a conversation that we, on an issue that we haven't agreed on, we come out on the back end in agreements. And so I really value your ability to, you know, approach every issue with an open mind and be cognizant of the different opinions that you get from both residents, but certainly from this board. And I know that's not an easy hat to wear sometimes, so I do appreciate your demeanor in that respect. And you can't match Adam's effort level as a town manager, and you know, that is certainly something that we value. So I'm very glad to have you come on for another three-year contract, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Mr. Heard. Mr. Diggins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Chapdeline, for accepting the terms. Me certainly, I don't know to what extent it's appropriate to go into any detail, so I'm going to assume not, but as you dig into details, I mean, I think it becomes really apparent, I mean, just how good a person you are, and how much you care about the town. And I appreciate all that you do. I mean, it's a really hard job. If nothing else, me just dealing with five of us is hard, and then you get me 8:30 on a Monday morning, and if you all think I'm intense in these meetings, it's like undiluted when me for 30 minutes on a Monday morning, you know, is, I'm sure, something else. But I learn a lot from you, and it's really a pleasure working with you, and look forward to working with you in any capacity, I mean, over the next three years or whatever amount of time is to our advantage to work together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Diggins. Mr. Helmut?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chapdeline, for your commitment to this town. It has been clear to me for the many years I've been involved in town government as a resident in this past year, as a new member of the board, how much you care about the people of this community, and how much you care about the people who work for the town. And that comes through loud and clear, that's something I hear consistently from people who talk to me. And you know, I said, I often say that the town manager, choosing the town manager is the most important decision that this board makes, and I think in a lot of respects, that is true. It's a really hard job, very few people, very few people can do it well, especially as well as you do. I think that we've seen that by the respect of Mr. Chapdeline's peers in his electing him to leadership, statewide leadership in this field. But we see this locally with the town manager who is remarkably accessible, is open, and is honest. You know, I think that disagreements are part of the job, part of the nature of government. Disagreements with decisions, unhappiness with priorities that we all have to make. But the one thing that Arlington can count on is we have a town manager who will tell us the truth, who will do what he says he will do, and he'll be honest with us. And I've seen that combined with incredible grace and professionalism, particularly under criticism, whether that's fair or unfair. And I think that you represent the town honorably, and we are fortunate as we go into some challenging years to have you at the helm, and we appreciate your sticking with us, and look forward to working with you for many more years to come.
Thank you, Mr. Helmut. Before I go to the vote, I want to give you an opportunity to speak as well, Mr. Chapdeline, and thank you again, and the floor is yours, and then we'll take the final vote.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I really want to thank both all of you collectively as a board, and each of you individually. I really have appreciated, some of you I've known longer than others, but I've appreciated our work together, especially over these past few difficult years. You know, to pick up on the points that a few of you made, you know, you're right that being a town manager, really, anywhere is a tough job. It's a tough job in good times, never mind in challenging times like we've all been facing. But at the end of the day, doing such a tough job in Arlington is the best you can get. And that's predominantly because Arlington is powered by amazing people. And it doesn't mean that any of us always agree on things, you know, whether it be the manager of the board or residents, but ultimately, this is a community that is powered by people that care about the community and want to advance things, and if you can have that as a starting point, you're in a good position. So I'm very excited to be able to sign this contract with the board and continue to serve the town. I'm very thankful for the consideration that you've given me, and I look forward to meeting all the challenges that we have ahead. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chapdeline. So on a motion to approve the contract by Mr. Heard, seconded by Mrs. Mahan, Attorney Hunt?
Heard?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Helmut?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
It's unanimous vote.
Great, thank you very much, and congratulations, Mr. Chapdeline, and thank you you're on for another three years, and we really look forward to that. So with that, we will now go to item two on the agenda, which is a request for approval for a vigil to observe January 6th anniversary at Whittemore Park from 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM, Eric Siegel, 84 Milton Street. I don't know if Mr. Siegel is with us tonight?
He is, and I've just promoted him to panelists.
Good evening, Mr. Siegel.
Good evening, sorry, I had to maybe rejoin the meeting.
Oh yeah, that's right, yeah, yeah, we did something a little differently this evening, so thank you for rejoining. So we have your special event permit application, why don't you tell us about the request? And there may be some new information that you have for us based on what you put in the application, and then we'll open it to the board for questions.
Sure. As we all know, January 6th of this year, there was an attempt to overturn the results of legitimate presidential election in the United States. So in observance of that, there are going to be vigils for democracy all around the country. There's at least 150, I know, that are organized already, and I'm sure that there will be a lot more as the time gets closer. I want to add to that, the events on January 6th of this year were not the beginning or the end of efforts to frustrate democracy. I don't think I need to go into details about gerrymandering and voter suppression, et cetera, et cetera, but those are all important issues, and I think that that's why we feel that it's very important to have a vigil in Arlington, and not coincidentally right on the Paul Revere route as well, which I think is relevant. This vigil is initially sponsored by First Parish Unitarian Universalist, and obviously, we have some space on the same corner, but I really feel like I would like this to be a town event, not a parish event. And now, when I requested, I requested the lawn in front of the Dowling Museum. Is that the same as Whittemore Park?
Yes, it is.
Okay, great, okay, yeah, so I requested that space because it's central, and because it sends a message that this is a town event and not just an event of a subset of the people in the town. Just two related pieces to that. One is that if you do grant permission for us to have the event there, I wonder if it'd be possible to leave the holiday lights around the tree until that date, because that would just make the space a lot brighter, and just, you know, less likely for people to bump into each other. And second, again, if you approve this request, if one of you could come and welcome us to the town, you know, welcome people to the town, I think that would be terrific. But the essential request is, can we use the space on January 6th? The event will be from 6:00 to 7:00, but I'm requesting it from 5:00 to 7:30, so we have time for setup and teardown?
Okay, okay, thank you, Mr. Siegel. I will turn now to the board for questions, comments, and I will start with Mrs. Mahan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to Mr. Siegel, and members of the parish, and others who will be helping sponsor this event. I don't have any questions, and I'd like to move approval.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Heard?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Diggins?
Yes, I just have a question to me, I see that the police detail is unchecked for yes or no. What's your thinking about that, Mr. Siegel?
We will contact the police and let them make a judgment about whether they think it's appropriate.
All right, yeah, I'm happy to approve this, and you never know how people are going to respond to this. I'm all for it, but just be careful, I think, to everyone. I mean, when we start seeing stuff on social media that we don't really know who's behind it, and so, so don't, I mean, if you see some negative stuff, just, unless you really know who's behind it, I mean, don't assume that there aren't other forces, you know, that are really trying to sow more divisions amongst us. Clearly, what happened on the 6th happened, there's no denying that, and the motives behind it. But I think there's also evidence that there are forces from outside of this country that are trying to magnify the differences amongst us, and help us, help us, I use that word ironically, me focus on the differences amongst us rather than the things that are similar amongst us, and that our diversity is really a sign of our strengths. So this is great, I'll try to make it, but I'm not sure that I can, but if I don't, it's not because of lack of support, so thank you for doing this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Diggins. Mr. Helmut?
Thank you, thank you for organizing this, I think it's important, and I'm happy to support it as well. Mr. Chair, am I correct that we, do we need to specify in the motion about leaving up the holiday lights, or is that something that the town manager can work out if possible?
And Mr. Chapdeline?
Though I'm going to guess that they aren't scheduled to come down before that date anyways, but they are both installed and removed by a private contractor, so there may be some limit to what I can do, but I'll see what I can do to make sure that they remain, unless we're really locked into having them taken down per contract.
Thank you.
Of course.
No other questions, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Helmut, and I just have a comment, and maybe perhaps suggesting a friendly amendment to the motion. Mr. Siegel, you mentioned, at this point, you haven't had any conversations with Chief Flaherty, and you're anticipating, you don't know exactly how large the crowd is, but between that and the issue on the holiday lights, I wonder if we could include that this, you will coordinate with both the town manager and the chief of police just to check off that box that's part of your petition for the event? Is that acceptable to? Yeah, okay, Mrs. Mahan, is that okay as a friendly amendment?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, I should have said that sooner, I definitely accept both amendments.
Okay, so, yeah, and otherwise, I am with my colleagues, and I support this as well. So on a motion by Mrs. Mahan, that was seconded by Mr. Heard, Attorney Hunt?
Mr. Heard?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Helmut?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Siegel.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda is the consent agenda, we have two items this evening. The minutes of the meeting of December 6th, 2021, and a reappointment to the Transportation Advisory Committee, Jeffrey Maxstutis, for a term to expire 12/31/24. On the consent agenda, Mr. Diggins?
I move approval, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Helmut?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan?
Thank you, no questions.
Mr. Heard?
I would just say that having served with Jeff, and since he lives across the street from me, I'm very happy that we're going to continue to have his expertise on the traffic advisory committee.
And I have no questions either, so on a motion by Mr. Diggins, seconded by Mr. Helmut, Attorney Hunt?
Mr. Heard?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Helmut?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
It's unanimous vote.
Okay, next, we have a series of appointments in items six through 11. Items six through nine are appointments that were made by the town managers, asking for our approval. Numbers 10 and 11 are board appointees to the ZBA. Mr. Heard and I had conducted interviews on that, and we'll get into that when we come to items 10 and 11. So if we can invite the individuals who are in item six or 11, and I will run down through each individual, but I will do 10 and 11 together and present on that.
So, Mr. Chair, you're okay if I promote everybody, and the board can take?
Yeah, we'll just go through it serially, we'll have separate votes, but we'll go through that individually. So I will call appointment six, or item six, to start Conservation Commission Associate Commission, Commissioner rather, for a term to expire 6/30/2024, Myra Schwartz. Is Ms. Schwartz with us this evening? Okay, good evening, Ms. Schwartz, you just need to unmute yourself?
Oh, right, I'm unamated now.
Yeah, thank you for joining us tonight. If you could just give us a little brief information about yourself and why you're interested in the Conservation Commission?
Sure, well, I've been a resident of Arlington for almost 20 years, and I've been involved with environmental issues here for, ever since then. I've been, I worked for EPA, I just retired from EPA, where I've been for almost 30 years. And so I've been very involved in even working with Arlington when I was at EPA. I worked a lot with the DPW, with Wayne Chenard on stormwater issues. I've worked a lot with the Mystic River Watershed Association, and I've been involved more from a citizen's role, working with the Watershed Association and the Arlington Land Trust, as well as the, a while back, the Friends of Spy Palm Park, and I was very instrumental in the restoration of the park in the early days. So I'm getting funding for that as well. So I've just had a commitment to environmental issues in Arlington for a long time, and I finally have time to devote to it. So, and you know, I'm really honored to serve on this commission with all the very talented people on there, that I, a lot of them I've worked with professionally as well. So that's it.
Thank you. I'll turn to the board, Mr. Helmut?
Thank you, I'd like to move approval, and thank you for your willingness to serve. I was fortunate to get to know some folks from the Conservation Commission when I was on the Community Preservation Act Committee, and I quickly learned just how important this body is in advocating for and protecting our natural resources. You're eminently qualified, and we are lucky to have you serving.
Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you.
Mrs. Mahan?
I would gladly second this motion. I watched from afar, Ms. Schwartz, in terms of her different hats that she's held here in the town of Arlington already. I'm really excited by your background, planning in the Boston Harbor, work, everything around that. You do not have to stay for this agenda item, but agenda item 14, we're going to be hearing from soon, one of your colleagues on the Conservation Commission, regarding the flooding and pollution issues down at the Alifee. We have the NFTs permit process coming up, we only get once every 15 years to comment on that. We're going to sort of be strategizing on that, and I'm pretty sure Mr. White is a member of CONCOM's, I think it's the Water Bodies Working Committee, so they have a separate facet for that. I just highlight that because I see all your expertise, and I'm plugging you in where I shouldn't be doing that.
That's all right, I might want to stay on.
Yeah, we might get to it quickly, but anyways, but it's not a requisite. I mean, you had my vote, you had hello, so thank you very much.
Thank you so much, thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan. Mr. Heard?
Thank you, and thank you for your willingness to serve. You have a very impressive and very relevant breadth of experience in your resume, and I look forward to work with you, and just thank you for giving your time to the town.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heard. Mr. Diggins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and yes, as I read your CV, my jaw just dropped lower and lower, I was really impressed. I was really impressed and yes, I really am going to be in touch because I'm going to need a lot of assistance as I get burned up on the CSO issue. From your experience, it's clear that you have insights from lots of dimensions on this difficult problem. And so, so yeah, I mean, I think you can bring me a lot of light to this. And so I may not be able to take you out to lunch because of the pandemic, but I'll make it up. But I mean, I really am serious. I am going to be in touch to ask for advice and sources of things to read to get some real knowledge of what's going on with this issue. So, thank you for your willingness to work with the commission and it's great having people like you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Diggins. Yeah, and I also support the motion to approve that Mr. Helmuth brought forward and I was really impressed with your resume. And I have to say, I saw your resume first as you originally had expressed some interest in being on the ZBA. And as I was reading your resume, I said, well, you'd even be a better fit for the Conservation Commission. And being put forward, I thought it was just fantastic. So it's just another example in our town of just the expertise that people bring to boards. And thank you so much for your willingness to serve.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And so on a motion by Mr. Helmuth, seconded by Mrs. Mahan for approval of Ms. Schwartz's appointment to the Conservation Commission, Attorney Hahn.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Helmuth?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Senator Spoh.
Congratulations and best of luck and thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Okay, item seven is appointment to the Disability Commission for a term to expire June 30th, 2024. Elena Gattica Herrera, and sorry if I mispronounced your name, but if you could tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in being on the Disability Commission.
Yes, thank you. It's Iliana. That's okay. I know it's like.
Sorry about that.
So I am a resident of Arlington for about 12 years now and I am the mother of a child with complex special needs and medical needs. First and foremost, I would say that's the way I always introduce myself as a mother. I have a background in medicine, but I kind of switched careers somewhat because of my own experience of having a daughter with special needs. And I have gained great expertise in the area of disability. I was able to get into a fellowship, the Land Fellowship Program, and I'm very passionate about systemic change. Really passionate about serving the community of people with disabilities and working with them alongside. And so, you know, I really have a vision for having more opportunities for people like my daughter within their own communities. And so it will be an honor for me to be a part of the commission and, you know, gain more knowledge and also give my own level of expertise in the areas that I have been able to gain expertise.
Thank you very much. I'll turn to the board now. Mrs. Mahan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I'd like to make a motion to approve Ms. Herrera's appointment to the Disability Commission. And I just want to say from mom to mom, I have a similar family structure. And sometimes, I guess, I guess I'd say I'm painfully aware of what the issues these kids and adults face, but especially even more so highlighted by the pandemic and that particular constituency, being able to not only find the services, but to create the environment that the services are beneficial. That unless you've kind of walked that road, it's not quite understandable. So I'm so thrilled that you do bring that background as well as my day job as a court reporter. And I was at a deposition Zoom the other day and there's a physician down at UMass Memorial. I'm blanking on her name and she started a program through UMass Memorial. It's like a new kind of family practice medicine which recognizes services needed for young mothers and young families. And when I was reading your background, and I can't blink, the board has actually started a new board certification for this sort of, she's an obstetrician, but then there's another name to her job that addresses this new specialized area that's slowly being recognized. So I know you'll be there for everyone, young and old with disabilities, but I really think you bring a lot to the table that's much needed. And I can tell you have the energy just with your being a mom duty. So my sincere thanks to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan. Mr. Hurd?
Thank you, and I'll echo my colleagues' comments and just thank you. This is one of, we have many, many boards and commissions in town, but this one is just so important to the work we do and we often tap this board for their opinions on a lot of the matters that come before this board. And it can be time consuming to get involved, but your passion for the subject is clear, both from your resume and from what we've heard from you tonight. So I do thank you for stepping up and serving on this board.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd. Mr. Diggins?
Yes, and me, again, very impressed with what you bring to the table and in your background is touching and it makes us appreciate even more your willingness to participate in the board because life is challenging and people who are differently abled have extra challenges and it's important that we have a commission that helps us to make life a little easier. And what I think we've all realized is that we all benefit from this. I mean, the classic example are the curb cuts. I mean, they were originally created to help people in wheelchairs, but people with strollers use them and those of us walking use them. So, thank you very much and if there's anything any of us on this board can do to assist, I'm sure we'll all be happy to respond to your call.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Diggins. Mr. Helmuth?
Thank you. Thank you so much for being willing to serve. The Disability Commission's important for all the reasons that my colleagues have mentioned and also we need you to keep the town accountable for real change, for measuring that change. You know, it's sometimes it's hard, sometimes things cost money. And I think that among all the other important things the commission does, keeping accessibility and awareness of everyone's needs front and center and everything we do is really important. And I know looking at your resume and what you're supposed to know that you will do that. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Helmuth. And I echo the comments of my colleagues and thank you for your interest in just reading the objective in your resume. You can really see the passion and objective to working towards improving health outcomes for individuals with special healthcare needs and other complex disabilities. So, thank you. And as Mr. Helmuth said, we look to you to hold us accountable and really appreciate your willingness to do this important work. So on a motion by, let's see, a motion by Mrs. Mahan, seconded by Mr. Hurd, Attorney Hahn.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Helmuth?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Senator Spoh.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item eight is a envisioned Arlington Committee, Caroline Murray, for a term to expire June 30th, 2024. Ms. Murray here with us tonight.
Mr. Chairman, I have not seen her join the Zoom yet, but the next appointment for Mr. Finalosa, he is here. If we want to move, if we could move to him and maybe Ms. Murray will be able to join shortly.
Sure. Okay, why don't we do that? So we'll go to item nine, Park and Recreation Commission Associate Member, term to expire June 30th, 2024, Josh Finalosa. Good evening, Mr. Finalosa. Sorry, it happens to everybody. It's just have a mute issue. The over under for me is about two times a night, so don't worry about it. Okay, good, good. Go right ahead. Now, we're still having, I don't know if there's an issue with your audio. It does look like you're unmuted, but we still can't hear you. Now, let's see.
Can anybody hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Is that better?
Yes.
Now I can't hear you.
Oh, boy.
I'm going to go ahead. If someone can, yeah, I can't hear you, but. Yeah, so I'm Josh Finalosa. Let's see, I've lived in Arlington for 17 years. I also own a business in Arlington. I'm an architect. I have three kids in the school system and my interest in parks and rec mostly developed during the pandemic when my kids were finding lots of good gains about being outside and being out in open spaces. So I started spending more time in the Parks and Recs meetings. My oldest son brought a petition to the commission for some mountain biking trails and so we've been working on that. So that's largely where my interest comes from.
Great. Thank you. I'll turn to the board now. Mr. Diggins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be happy to motion to approve Mr. Finalosa's appointment. And I saw your kids' presentation to Parks and Recs for the mountain bike trails. That was impressive. I think his mom reached out to me to let me know that was happening. And so, yeah, that was very impressive. I don't know where it has gone so far or what the product, what was happening, but it's just really good to see young people taking the initiative. And so that's great. So thank you for your willingness to step up on the Parks and Rec Commission and welcome aboard.
Thank you, Mr. Diggins. Mr. Helmuth?
Thank you. I happily second that. Appreciate your willingness to serve.
Mrs. Mahan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I have been following your young son's adventure so impressed with how he's organized himself and his constituency. And I've had several conversations with our Park and Rec Director, Joe Connolly, who gave me all the nuts and bolts of it. And then thank you to Mr. Diggins for, I know I drive, I definitely know I drive all of my colleagues crazy at one time or another, perhaps too much information. So thank you, Mr. Diggins, for following up on that as well as, I know my other colleagues are also aware. I'm thrilled that you're volunteering for this as well as, you know, having kids and was it 369 or 6910? I miss those days. I'm now talking about grandchildren I have in those ages, so it goes fast. So once again, sorry for being so remote and thank you for your service. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan. Mr. Hurd?
And thank you again for your willingness to serve. Hopefully after we put some opera funds to work, you'll have some nice new playgrounds to take care of in the Parks and Recreation Commission and maybe some new fields. So, no, this is, I have young kids, two, six and eight. So the parks and the fields are where we spend most of our time and it's so important to keep them up because you can see when they decline and it has an immediate adverse effect when that happens to our facilities. And, you know, we're going to have a lot of nice new facilities and it's important to keep up with them and make sure they're being used appropriately divided appropriately amongst the different uses in town. So, thank you for serving and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd. Yeah, I also want to thank you for your willingness to serve. And this is a really interesting time to be in the Parks and Recreation Commission because there will be funds to improve playgrounds and there's upcoming plans coming up and maybe some new opportunities for whether it be Poets Corner or elsewhere in town. So best of luck. I support the motion and on a, which is a motion by Mr. Diggins, seconded by Mr. Helmuth, Attorney Hahn.
Mr. Diggins? I'm sorry, Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Helmuth?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Senator Spoh.
Congratulations and thank you again. Did Ms. Murray join us? Okay, that was an appointment by the town manager, well, town manager's appointment subject to our approval. I think at this point, if we have a motion for Ms. Murray?
Mr. Chair, are you good?
Yes.
Yeah, I didn't interrupt since I served with Ms. Murray and Priscic 12, a town meeting member, know well. And I'd be very happy to move approval based on my knowledge of her commitment to the town and understanding of our government.
Great, thank you. Do you have a second?
A second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Diggins. Also a motion by Mr. Helmuth, seconded by Mr. Diggins. Any further comments? Seeing none?
Just briefly, I've gotten three or four texts from residents and other town employees that have joined the meeting before and for some reason, a handful of them seem to be having issues saying that their email address is invalid. So she may have been trying to get in. I'm going to, you know, I'll follow up with the town manager. Ha ha, new thing for you. I'll follow up with the town manager tomorrow and try to find out why that was. So she may be trying to get in and for some reason just hasn't been able to. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Mahan. So on a motion by Mr. Helmuth, seconded by Mr. Diggins, Attorney Hahn.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Helmuth?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mrs. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Senator Spoh.
Thank you. So as I said, items six through nine were town manager appointments subject to our approval. Item 10 and 11, Zone Board of Appeals, that is a select board appointment. And I had asked Mr. Hurd to assist me with interviews to the individuals who had expressed interest in the ZBA. We had one full member opening and two associate members with the end of the MUGAR hearing. One of the full members stepped down and both associate members stepped down with a number of people expressed interest. And Mr. Hurd and I conducted interviews last week and the two individuals that we'd like to put before the board for approval for a full member, Dan Riccadelli, I see him, he's here with us tonight. For an associate member, Venkatesh Holley, I don't see him right now. We spoke to him last week. He indicated that he would accept the appointment if so voted. It turns out while we had a number of people who initially expressed interest, there was more interest in the full member position than we had spots available. So we still have an opening on the associate member, one associate member position. We will repost that in January and look for expressions of interest from the public. So Mr. Riccadelli is here this evening and we're here to answer any questions on his behalf or he can answer any questions. I told him he didn't have to make a statement or anything and people had spoken beforehand. So I don't know if you want to say anything, Mr. Riccadelli. I'm putting you on the spot, but thank you for your willingness to serve.
Thank you so much. Yeah, I'm Dan Riccadelli. I've been a resident of Arlington for the last five years. I'm a registered architect in Massachusetts and I've been working in and around Boston for the last 13 years in that capacity. And so I often, I often present to boards like the ZBA and be, you know, excited to represent Arlington's interests and be a board member.
Thank you very much. And so I will turn to my colleague who conducted the interviews for the motion, Mr. Hurd?
Thank you. I'd like to approve Mr. Riccadelli's appointments for the full spot to the Zone Board of Appeals. And thank you. We had a nice conversation a few days back and I was very impressed by your knowledge and your relevant knowledge as an architect, but also just as your passion and your desire to get involved in the town. So I look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd. Mr. Diggins?
I will be happy to second that and to say I'm impressed by your leadership in the Equity, Diversity and Inclusion Network at the BSA. So I think they'll bring a healthy perspective. It also, so I think they'll bring a healthy perspective to, to the, the ZBA. Not that it needs it, it's just that, you know, you'll add more to it. And, and, and I'm sure if you haven't found it interesting already in other parts of your life or other episodes, it's, it's, it's always very interesting to be on the other side of the table. And, and, and if nothing else, I mean, I think it helps when you're on both sides of the table to appreciate the other person's perspective a lot. And I think that'll go a long way to serving in the, the, the town and, and the community at large. Because me, a lot of our issues me really will affect me, not only Arlington, but the, the broader region. So thank you very much for your willingness to be on the ZBA.
Thank you, Mr. Diggins. Mr. Helmuth.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm reminded of something our town manager said earlier in the meeting about how Arlington is just full of residents who are willing to step up and get involved. And I'm impressed that you're willing to serve after living here five years. And you hope you find it as rewarding as, as many of the rest of us have and that you enjoy being on the other side of the desk or the Zoom, depending on how the ZPA is meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Helmuth. Mrs. Mahan.
Ditto to my previous colleague's remarks. And I really am, I say this a lot, but I'm definitely excited by your background and expertise that you'll be bringing. Because every member of every board commission committee has an individual career strength. While also being a resident of Arlington. And one of the things I said before, my day job's a court reporter, which is very dangerous because it gives me a little bit of knowledge on everything. But one of my first jobs was blazing granite, seventy-five Federal Street, and I learned the importance of chalk lines. And I, I know from your work as an architect and coordinating with the different crafts and specialties, not only around the areas of schedule, but also safety. I really feel you'll be able to bring that because you'll know to look for it. You'll know when it's not there. Because I'm a union member, but not with one oh three, twenty-two, twenty-two. But one of the things we're all concerned about is workplace safety. And of course, one of my most recent cases is the consignee Shabell WL French Fatality. They had at the Wupin Public Library. And there were things that I feel if Arlington had had a job like that coming in between our building department inspector employees as well as ZBA. Now especially with you on that commission, okay, board, would be able to recognize people in the industry, there were obvious red flags, you know. People know OSHA ten, OSHA thirty, but anything beyond that, you know. So I'm looking for you to have, you know, keep that expertise as you have in the forefront. And I'm really excited. I, you know, I try to stay out of other boards, commission committees business. So when you're here, you're captured for me. So I have to, you're not captured, you're captured. I take advantage of the opportunity, but as with anything, I'm always available if it's any way I can help or any way else. But you don't need my help. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Mahan. Yeah, and, and I also, I was very impressed with your resonating with your enthusiasm for the job. And I should tell the other members that I did learn last week that we had been asked to fill these slots. And not only were we asked to fill the slots, but we were reminded to tell each candidate that if you do get appointed Monday night, your first meeting's tomorrow night, December twenty-first. So, and Mr. Riccadelli agreed to that short schedule and, and we really thank you for that. This is a really technical board and they, you bring your expertise to it. So thank you for your willingness to, to, to serve on the ZBA. So on a motion by Mr. Hurt, seconded by Mr. Diggins, Attorney Hunt.
Mr. Hurt?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Helmuth?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mrs. DeCoursey?
Yes. Congratulations, Mr. Riccadelli. Thank you again.
Thank you so much.
I don't know if Mr. Holy is, if he may have had a problem with the Zoom. I can, Mr. Hurt, and I can, we speak a little bit about him. We also had the opportunity to interview Mr. Holy last week. He is an architect as well. And he has been very interested in getting involved in the town and actually has checked in quite frequently on various ZBA meetings. So I'll go through the same order on, on this one and I'll turn to Mr. Hurt. This is for an associate member position on the ZBA.
Yep. And I was also impressed with our conversations with Ben Cat. And I think he brings up some really relevant experience and passion from the conversation that we had with him briefly a few days ago. And I know sometimes we like to have people before us, but I would just note, as Mr. The Chair alluded to, if, if for some reason somebody in the ZBA can't attend the meeting tomorrow, they can't meet unless they have both of these appointments. So I would move approval of this appointment for the associate position.
Thank you, Mr. Hurt. Mr. Diggins.
I'll happily second that. And I mean, I have a lot of respect for those who, to serve in associate positions. Because it's a certain extent, me, they, their level of passion and commitment is, is at least as strong as those who, to, who get to vote. And of course, they are pretty much the farm team for, for these committees, boards, you know, commissions. And I guess in the case, in this case, the board. All I'll say is looking at, at his, um, his resume, I look at one chestnut place and I dream. I just dream. It, uh, it's like it's got views of Boston and, and it's like, that's an impressive structure. I'll just leave it at that, you know.
Thank you, Mr. Diggins. Mr. Helmuth.
Thank you. No comments.
Mrs. Mahan?
Thank you. Happy to support.
Okay, yeah, and I am as well. And as Mr. Hurt said, we're impressed with Mr. Holy's experience and his interest in, in, in serving and, and willingness to start tomorrow night as well on, on short notice. So again, on a motion by Mr. Hurt, seconded by Mr. Diggins, Attorney Hunt.
To Hurt?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Helmuth?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes. Thank you. Item twelve, under licenses and permits, this is our annual license renewals for approval. I will read all of the licenses. There were several documents that we received. There were some comments from various departments on some of the renewals. But it is license renewals for contracted drain layer, class one, class two, class two, non-premises auctioneer, lodging houses, innkeepers, secondhand dealer, public entertainment, automatic amusement, food vendor, common victual, victual, victular, sorry, wine and malt beverages only restaurant, all alcohol restaurant, all alcohol club, theater license, all alcohol package store and sidewalk cafe. These licenses are granted on an annual basis. And the renewal would, would start in January. And so on licenses renewals, I will start with Mr. Helmuth.
Thank you. I move approval.
Thank you, Mr. Helmuth. Mrs. Mahan?
Um, I will second it, Mr. Chair, and I have a sort of off the beaten path question that I'd like to ask through you to the town manager, just very briefly, because I'm looking at all these businesses and I know that. Am I correct? Is the Board of Health meeting tonight or a different night to discuss any possible additional or bringing back COVID nineteen with the businesses, COVID nineteen measures?
The board met last Wednesday evening. It isn't scheduled to meet again until January eleventh. And I was gonna talk a little bit under new business about what they might be considering.
Okay, that's fine. Then that, let's wait for new business. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Did I second that?
Yes, you did.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan. Mr. Hurt.
No comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I did notice on the Board of Health that it seems that the, the listing for the establishment that closed is, and those that are, that open, it should be switched. So, so it's just a minor administrative correction. And, and I, I just, I have a question. I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Chaplin, that I didn't ask this earlier. And maybe you should wait until then, till our next meeting. But in the case of the establishment on Park Ave where they, there was a complaint about lawnmowers, it, um, we, now, it was recommended that we approve and I'm fine with that. You know, I was just kind of, wanted to have, the fact that it was flagged, you know, do we have a sense of the, the nature? I mean, clearly it's not illegal, or I imagine the police department would have said something needs to change about this. But do we have a sense of what's going on there?
I would say a few things and then I would, with the board's, chair's permission, defer to Attorney Hunt about the proper way to potentially pursue any avenues of enforcement. But over the years, my recollection has been that we have had to enforce or take some enforcement action against that property for blocking the public right of way in the sidewalk with materials that have been stockpiled, stored or on display on that property, as well as the potential storage or at least suspected storage of hazardous materials. And some of the drums or larger containers on site. There may be some other violations that inspectors have seen over the years. But mostly, my recollection again is that we have taken action when the items being stored on that property flow off the property onto the public right of way in the sidewalk. Whether any of those amount to a revocation or non-renewal, I would defer to Town Council if he has a thought on that.
Okay.
I, I, I would like to hear from Town Council on that because now that I hear there's blocking sidewalks, I mean, that's changed the tone of things for me a lot, you know.
Sure. I, yeah, and I, I had some conversations about this property with, with Attorney Hunt, but I'll, why don't I turn to him now? And then I have some comments on that particular property as well, but Attorney Hunt.
Mr. DeCoursey, would you like me to sort of rehash, I don't know, rehash, but outline what we discussed?
Sure.
So in, in response to the manager and Mr. Diggins and some of the other board members' comments, you know, the board has a couple of different options. If the property is an active non-compliance, the board can grant the permit, can grant the renewal, subjects to conditions to be rectified at a certain point in time and essentially have that permit come back before the board if those conditions aren't met. The other thing the board can do is essentially say, we will only grant this renewal if you meet X, Y, and Z conditions by a date certain. And until that point, you don't essentially have renew. I think the board has pretty broad discretion where there's any violation of certainly public health regulations or town bylaws, including things like obstructing public ways. But I think the board has a little bit of room here to either say, we're just gonna renew this and we're gonna trust that our enforcement entities will essentially rectify the situation to renew with condition that says, rectify this by a date certain, or the board will be reconsidering your, your license. Or then finally, probably the most extreme version would be, you don't have a license and we're not gonna renew it unless and until you rectify these conditions. So on, on the spectrum of possibilities, again, there's sort of trust that the town enforcement entities will take care of it. The midline is, we're gonna approve your renewal, but rectify these conditions. We want to hear a report of compliance or we'll bring you back before the board. And then finally, we're not gonna renew you until you meet A, B, and C conditions. I'm not sure we have enough specific information for that la, that latter option. It would be probably preferable to have a little bit more lined up before we said we're not renewing until you meet A, B, and C. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Hunt. Mr. Diggins?
What was, Chair, I mean, since you have had some, some discussion about this, I'm interested in hearing what you have to say. I mean, we, we, before, I would recommend the, the harshest action. I would like to hear from the owner establishment, get some sense of the other person's point of view and explanation perhaps of why they are repeatedly doing this. And maybe there's something the town can do to help. I don't know. But I try not to be like really hard, harsh, me, without at least caring for the person. But I'm definitely hearing, interested in hearing what you are thinking, Mr. Chair, before recommending anything.
Okay, thank, thank you, Mr. Diggins. Yeah, so we, as you can see here, there, the inspectional services and the planning department both identified this property for various complaints that had been received overcrowded with lawnmowers over the past year. And I don't know if other members have received calls or emails from residents. I've received a number of calls on, on this property. And I don't feel that the harshest line is the appropriate one to take. But I do feel that it is hard for our enforcement entities. And in talking this over with Attorney Hunt early today, I, I would prefer the, the middle route where we basically renew, we're not holding up the license, we give a date. And if there is an improvement at the site, then we ask the owner to come in before us. Because this has gone on for a long time. The, the thing I get really nervous about at this site at nineteen Park Ave, right over the bridge is there's a number of tires that get stored right up against the bridge. And as things get moved, the tires have actually been on the edge of the bridge. And it just is a potentially very dangerous situation with the bike way right below. And, and with, with the, the lawnmowers and the snow blowers, it's, it's an issue too. It perhaps is gonna become more of an issue in the back of the site because of the housing corporation of Arlington property because it butts up against their property, not against their second building, but it's, it's there. And I think there are some issues at this property that, that clearly need to be addressed. I don't feel that we should deny the license, but I don't think we should place it strictly on our enforcement entities to this point because I think it's, it's difficult for them. So at least with that one, I, I feel like, you know, we may want to consider the second intermediate step that Attorney Hunt outlined. Mr. Helmuth?
Yeah, I, I think I'd like to amend my motion along those lines. And I think my only question is what's the best language and expectation? One question I have is, do we know, is there currently a non-compliance situation? Do we know one way or the other?
It currently, if there's an, if, if they're in compliance or?
Yeah, if there, if there, if there is a compliance issue now, at, at the present time. Then I'm just trying to think, do we say, you know, the situation to be resolved? Or if it's, if it's more of a longstanding issue, would it be productive to, to require that there be an action plan or, you know, an agreement with the town manager perhaps? Or, you know, what to, to sort of address the long, the various issues in the past and, you know, a plan to rectify that. I, you know, I'm open to guidance about how to, you know, what, how exactly, what exactly we want to say.
Maybe I could turn to Mr. Chaplin. My understanding is that, that the property from time to time, things will improve to a certain degree. And it may get to a point where a inspector needs to go out there. So at, at any one time, maybe okay today, next week, maybe not be, is that what you have found, Mr. Chaplin?
That is exactly what I would have said. Yes.
Um, yeah, so, you know, I, I'm happy to have had this refined, but I think, you know, to, to require that there be an agreement, if that, would that serve the town manager's purposes and, and in helping to navigate that situation of a discussion, an agreement with, you know, for, you know, for how to avoid these recurring problems?
Comfortable with that? If council thinks that's something we could legally have teeth with.
Yeah, Attorney Hunt, would you prefer a date at Attorney Hunt to see improvement or, 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 or an agreement?
Yeah, whatever you think, whatever you think.
I think I'd like to see both paired together. So what I'd like to see is, you know, that the approval of, of the renewal of this license is conditioned upon this factory compliance with any outstanding issues. And a demonstrated plan for managing these issues going forward by a date certain. I, I think that you can pick a date with a little bit of time to be fair to these folks. But I think from what the manager is describing, what all of you are describing, there's both a tendency for acute issues to develop and then for these things to recur. And I think it's in everybody's best interest, including the operator, to not have, you know, repeated enforcement calls, but rather develop a management plan for these issues so that we're not doing this in the middle of a permit cycle, but we're, we're, we're doing it when the board has some leverage, but also there's an opportunity to clear. So it was a long-winded way of saying, I would say that you should have fixed a date certain for basically a report to say that, you know, we're satisfied with their efforts to improve these conditions now and outline how they're gonna prevent future violations.
Yeah, that sounds really good to me. I would welcome the. I would welcome the guidance from my colleagues or the town manager on, and pick the date.
But I ask, is the second or last Friday in February, from the town's perspective? And what it needs to do and how long that would take? Is that too ambitious? Is that, um, too much time? I'm, I'm trying to think, you know, starting in January, we have the month. Cause I want to give time for both sides, um, the owner and the town. Whether the second Friday or last Friday in February, uh, I guess I would ask the chair or the town manager that that's a good date or advise me otherwise.
Yeah. Mr. Chaplin, give any thoughts on the date?
I, I mean, I, I, I feel like the, the last Friday in, in February would make sense. Maybe just, you know, just giving that extra couple of weeks in case snow hinders and he clean up or efforts towards compliance, just giving us a couple more weeks might be helpful.
And so I would just, it's Mr. Helmuth's motion. I don't want to hijack it. That, that's just kind of my, I'm, I'm thinking of the process and all that. And as you are, thank you.
I invited to hijack it. A friendly hijack is always, is always welcome. Yeah. And, and I, and I think, I think what I like about a written plan agreement is that we're not just saying, now, you know, do better this year. I think we want something concrete in writing, um, you know, that, that will specifically address, uh, the nature of the complaints that we've had and an acknowledgement that there's a way that, you know, what this is what we're going to do to keep having kind of the repeat visits from the inspectional services. So yes, I'd amend my motion to conditionally apply that, uh, approve, uh, the renewal, um, conditioned on, um, a correction of any, uh, outstanding, uh, problems. And, uh, the acceptance by the town manager of a written plan to, uh, address, uh, to prevent recurrence of these issues in the coming year.
Okay. And that, that would be by February 20th?
By February. Yes. Thank you. By the last. Yes. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Great. And. Thank you, Mr. Helmuth. Is that, uh, Ms. Mahan, is that, if that's acceptable, take a sec? If you'll accept that amended as a, as a, a second there?
No, definitely. I just.
Yeah.
I can't, I can't do two Zoom meetings and check my calendar as, and definitely as the chair can. And that's why he's chair and I'm not.
Okay. So we have a motion by Mr. Helmuth, seconded by Mrs. Mahan. And, and before we come to the vote, I do want to say one thing on Mr. Diggins' comment on the Board of Health. That has been corrected on the online version that was caught earlier today. But if you downloaded it earlier, it didn't reflect that. But if you go on the online version now, it, it is accurate in terms of the closed and the open, um, categories. So an emotion by Mr. Helmuth, seconded by Mrs. Mahan, it's approval of everything outright except for 19 Park Ave, which is the conditional, uh, approval with the dates, um, to have a plan, submitted in agreement by February 25th. Mr. Diggins?
And, and I will vote for it, but I just want to send a signal, you know, how I feel about sidewalks. I mean, and this compliance thing, for me, I mean, the sidewalk, if it's blocked, should be cleared tomorrow. You know, uh, and, and for me, 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 I, I would ask for a plan, you know, within the next two to three weeks. Cause if they're just violating, I mean, the, 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 the permit, I mean, the rules, me, it's like, I'm not too big into leniency on, on that, but, but like I said, I'm going to go along with this because I, I, I get it, you know, I'm in. And so I just wanted to send a signal. That's all. Thank you.
Yeah. And, and I'll tell you, the sidewalk is not blocked right now. There, there are other issues and we've got some tire issues on the side of the property, but the, the sidewalk is clear right now from the property.
Great.
Okay. All right. Attorney Heim.
Mr. Hurd?
I would note that he, I'm happy to, that we are taking care of this, but he is one of the most delightful business owners. I'm, I'm sure we'll, we'll be able to work with him. Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Well, thanks for that, Mr. Hurd. I appreciate that. Yes. That calmed me down.
Mr. Helmuth?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
It's unanimous vote.
Thank you. Uh, next is open forum. Except in unusual circumstances, any matter presented for consideration of the board shall neither be acted upon nor a decision made the night of the presentation in accordance with the policy under which the open forum was established. It should be noted that there is a three-minute time limit to present a concern or request. Um, so we'll open, open forum and Mr. Chaplin, if there's anybody who wishes to be heard.
Right now, there was, uh, there's one hand raised by Patricia Warden.
Good evening, Mrs. Warden.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Thank you very much. Um, and as you said, Patricia Warden, Precinct Eight. Um, I did want to let you know that, I'm sure you do know, that the State Department of Housing and Community Development have just come out with written rules referencing recent legislation. And those rules, if carried out, would be devastating for East Arlington. They demand a huge increase in housing density in the entire area within half a mile from Alewife MBTA station. That area includes up to approximately the Hardy School and, um, with, um, things like Wetlands, Thorntry Field, and Mangolia Park, even to a small part of Massachusetts Avenue. To avoid a takeover of that attractive and very cohesive community by developers of apartments, buildings, and towers, please direct the Arlington Planning Department to work energetically to design zoning to protect East Arlington. That requires your very strong direction since the planning department has for years been moving in the opposite direction. On another matter, East Arlington also deserves an end to the combined sewer overflow problem, which has gone on for too long and affects hundreds of Arlingtonans and thousands of neighboring residents in the well-financed city of Cambridge. Surely the town could negotiate an end to this problem, which is an environmental and public health hazardous situation. Surely since our town manager, and congratulations, Mr. Chaplin. Surely he, since he is a member of the Metro Mayor's Coalition and Vice President of Metropolitan Area Planning Council and President of the Massachusetts Municipal Association, surely he can help bring an end to the combined sewer overflow problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Warden. Is there anybody else for open forum?
There are no, uh, just one, one additional, oh. A, a hand went up and then quickly went down. I'm.
Okay.
Um, there's one, one additionally, uh, two hands now, Leah Broder and Linda Verone.
Okay. And that will, two more and that, that will be this evening for, uh, for open forum. So. Okay. Ms. Broder?
Hi, um, forgive me if I'm talking out of order. I too wanted to speak to the combined sewer overflows and I see it's on the agenda. So do I just withhold my, okay?
Well, I'll, I'll tell you what, you're here. Why don't you, you can make your statement now because I'm not sure where that. I, I know we're going to have a presentation, but I'm not sure how much time we'll have for, you know, full public participation. And so why don't you go ahead and, and, um,
Okay.
and, and speak.
Okay. Thank you very much. Leah Broder, 44 Michael Street. I'm a town meeting member for Precinct One, um, uh, and a resident and neighbor to the Alewife Brook, which I use on a daily basis and, um, participate with neighbors in annual cleanup. There is a very active neighborhood group that takes care of this land. And we, I see it, um, as a, not just an open space resource, but an integral part of our pedestrian and bike, um, network in, in town. Um, and as well as a critical piece of habitat. So the bird watching and, um, observe, observation of wildlife there is incredible. And to, as I've learned recently, um, about the extent of the combined sewer overflows, I think this is a serious public health threat, um, especially as we see water levels rise, storminess rise through climate change. Um, it seems just a matter of time for that bank grit, for that brook to over, um, spill its banks. And knowing that there's untreated sewage in the water means that there's a risk now to our whole neighborhood as, um, so I want, uh, I just wanted to add my voice to the others who are, um, asking you all to do your best to, uh, to lobby for, um, an elimination of the combined sewer overflows from the Cambridge, Somerville, and MWRA outfalls. So thank you very much and thank you all for your service.
Thank you, Ms. Broder.
The next speaker is Linda Verone.
Hello?
Good evening, Ms. Verone.
Hi, um, I don't know if this is the appropriate time for me to bring this up, but I'm, um, one of the people that's concerned about the crosswalk on Chestnut Street. And I'm not seeing that on the, um, agenda that I'm looking at. Is there some, well, I know you can't answer questions on this thing, but I just want to, to let you know that, that my interest and, um, strong concern about this issue is continuing.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Verone. Okay. And that concludes open forum for this evening. Moving on to traffic rules and orders and other business. Item 13, creation of semi-quintcentennial committee. John V. Hurd, select board. Mr. Hurd?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was actually embarrassed when I read the, the agenda for tonight. I feel like I was plagiarizing, so I should, at the outset, say that Mr. Curro, our former colleague, had reached out to me in the process of, of creating this committee. We had originally, um, took, taken a vote to create the committee then with the, that, with the caveat that I was going to come back with the parameters of the committee. So, Mr., what you see before you in the agenda was drafted by Mr. Curro based on a, uh, review of the charge of the Lexington Committee, which has a similar, that, um, similar charge to what the Arlington Committee will be. So we, he, um, he took it and he massaged so, some of the appointments to fit Arlington's, um, committees that we have here and to, to fit Arlington's needs. But I do want to acknowledge his work in, uh, creating that document. I, I told him if he wanted to come today and, and take the credit for himself, he could, but he had a conflict tonight. So, um, so this is the committee that we, that we're proposing for the semi-quintcentennial committee. And it is, it still seems far away, but there's a lot of planning that has to be done. So the committee does really have to get going pretty quickly, especially with some potential, um, funding sources to help defray some of the costs for the celebration. So we are looking for the board's approval of the proposed committee parameters with open to any friendly amendments that the board might have.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Mr. Hurd. Uh, Mr. Diggins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I will be happy to, um, make a motion to approve, uh, the creation of the, uh, well, the, um, the parameters as spelled out here by, um, Mr. Kiro. And I wouldn't dare amend anything that he's written.
Thank you, Mr. Diggins. Uh, Mr. Helmuth?
Thank you. I'll second that. Um, this is really important. First of all, for the public to understand what, what happened in these events. But I think that Arlington has, for a long time, kind of gotten short shrift from historical, um, awareness and, and tourists, uh, really important things happened here. We know this here in town. And so I, I love the creation of this committee to, to really shine the spotlight on the important part that, that Arlington played. I will note, notice that there is a, a spot for a select board member to be appointed. And when the time comes, Mr. Hurd, I have a nomination.
Thank you, Mr. Helmuth. Uh, Mrs. Mahan?
Um, definitely no, no questions. I don't know what the screening guidelines are going to be. Perhaps one of them is in advance for on members of this committee to practice saying that really big hundred dollar word before their first attempt at an actual meeting. Because although it is kind of bringing some brevity to it, so no questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan. I was practicing it all afternoon. Okay. And, and I, I support this as, as well, uh, no amendments, no further comments. So an emotion by Mr. Diggins, seconded by Mr. Helmuth, Attorney Heim.
Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Helmuth?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
unanimous vote.
Okay. Um, item 14 is a discussion of the CSO outfall on Alewife Brook, both the ones in Cambridge and Somerville. Um, Diane and Mahan, Vice Chair. I know we're going to have a, a presentation tonight from, from Ms. Anderson, but I will turn to Mrs. Mahan to begin the discussion.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'm going to try to be as brief as possible. I was involved with the last NFTs permit process, um, regarding the CSO discharges and outfalls, 15, 16 years ago. I advocated strongly with, um, the Sound Good Neighbor Committee and, uh, friends of the Little River and groups in Cambridge to eliminate all the CSOs. We were successful with getting two eliminated and we're told, you know, doing all five wasn't in their 50-year plan. And, you know, it's an admirable goal and blah, 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 blah. And so this past year, I started having conversations first with the town manager and the chair, um, about, um, first inquiring, I had a feeling NFTs was going to come around. But then also, um, had a, a extended conversation with town council before our goals meeting, select board goal meeting, um, to start thinking about not just the NFTs permit process avenue of relief, um, but perhaps others. And we discussed it at our goals meeting, um, and I'm, I'm also asked for this agenda item for Ms. Anderson and Mr. White, who's on our Conservation Commission, um, who co-chair, a co-founded, I believe, the Save the Alewife, um, committee, which again, a lot of great expertise, um, attended a Zoom meeting, um, a week or two ago. Again, I'm, I want Ms. Anderson and Mr. White to speak to their efforts because I agree with all of them. Um, I made sure at the goals meeting, um, what I said was I didn't want to steal the thunder or flooding and let them explain themselves. But I just want to let, um, Kristen and Ms. Anderson and Mr. White and members of the Save the Alewife Committee. I have, I had asked my colleagues after we all discussed it, because flooding, sewage and, um, climate, future potential climate change, uh, issues down there will be exacerbated. So we have, have sort of a NFTs, Alewife perm, permit placeholder in our goals. And that I said after tonight, then with you and the chair and the town manager could kind of further redefine, redefine the points. So I did cite, you know, NFTs, MWRA, and speak with the chair, who's also an attorney. Our town council and Adam brought up EPA. And, um, the other thing I did it because I, I'm, I'm, I'm going to have to ask unless Ms. Anderson or Mr. White knows if we could get any relief under the current, um, I think it's Boston Clean Harbor Act, um, guidelines out there. So, um, and with that, I don't want to, um, labor the point when I know Ms. Anderson and Mr. White, I'm confident they have prepared a presentation will be much more informative. And then after that, um, presentation's over. After I hear from my, all my colleagues, then I'll, I'll put my two cents in again at the end in terms of any future actions. future action steps. And I understand what it is, is we get a lot of information tonight and we need time for the chair, the manager in town council to really parse it out the right way. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan. And I see Ms. Anderson is with us. Before she starts, I, I had a nice conversation with her over the weekend. I want to thank her for her commitment to with her advocacy on this issue. And for those of you who haven't seen it, she made a very impressive presentation to the Cambridge Finance Finance Council, not Finance Committee, but a subcommittee of their city council regarding this issue. So I will turn it over to Ms. Anderson for her presentation. And then we can have comments or questions from the board.
Thank you. I'm, my name is Kristen Anderson. I live at twelve Upland Road West. Thank you, Arlington Select Board, Town Council and Town Manager for giving us your attention this evening. Thanks especially goes out to Chair Decourcy and Ms. Mahan for working to get Save the Elwife Brook on the agenda. We appreciate the hard work that the town has done over the years to address the problems in the Elwife Brook. David White is with me here tonight. David is a longtime Arlington Conservation Commissioner and member of their Water Bodies Working Group. David and I founded Sound Save the Elwife Brook because attention needs to be brought again to the problems of pollution and flooding in the Elwife as we are beginning to see the effects of climate change. A major effort was started twenty years ago to clean up Elwife Brook and close the combined sewer outfalls, aka CSOs, which release untreated sewage water during storm events from Cambridge and Somerville. Through their, the combined efforts of MWR A and the adjacent communities, including Arlington, many improvements were made and six of the twelve CSOs discharging into the Brook were closed. Quite unexpectedly, we are now seeing that those great achievements from the first plan to close the CSOs are losing ground to climate change with its wetter rain season and more frequent and dramatic storms. What we once thought would be an eighty-five percent reduction in CSO discharges is now completely eclipsed by the effects of climate change. In 2021, there have been fifty million gallons of sewage contaminated water discharged into the Elwife Brook. This is the same volume of sewage contaminated stormwater discharge as compared to the base year of nineteen ninety-seven, which is the year that the MWR A chose as the design year in its original long-term CSO control plan. During flood events, unsafe and untreated sewage water from the CSOs flows into the homes and yards and parks of our East Arlington neighborhoods. A review of FEMA flood maps reveals there are an estimated twelve hundred East Arlington residents, thirty-five hundred Canton Bridgeans and three hundred Belmont residents living in the Little River, Elwife Brook, one hundred year floodplain. Stormwater discharges are also a problem that needs attention, but the causes and solutions are different. More work must be done. By organizing and collaborating with area residents and officials in Arlington, Cambridge, Belmont and Somerville, we can achieve a regional political solution to this problem. The solution must be modernization of the nineteenth century combined sewer infrastructure that discharges sewage contaminated water into the Elwife Brook. The sanitary and storm sewers can be separated so that sewage does not mix with stormwater. Then the remaining CSOs can be closed. Green infrastructure must also be part of the solution. Stormwater can be naturally filtered and cleaned by trees and plants. Wetlands vegetation will slip up groundwater as the roots aid infiltration and send the rainwater into the water table where the water becomes a resource rather than a waste product. The Elwife Brook can become a safe place for area residents to live near, as well as being a safe place to enjoy boating and fishing in the summer and ice skating in the winter. It can support wildlife habitat for fish and eels, which in turn could feed great blue heron. It can be an asset rather than a liability. Twenty years ago, select board member Diane Mahan was working on these same issues with Senator Will Brownsberger, then a Belmont selectman on the Tri-Community Flood Group. The Tri-Community Flood Group serves as a model for regional collaborative success. That group effectively solved the repeated one hundred year flood events that were plaguing the Elwife area neighbors every two to three years. We would like to hear Ms. Mahan's ideas about making improvements in the Elwife. And we are here this evening to respectfully ask for your support. There are crucial regulatory deadlines coming up as well as once in a lifetime federal funding opportunities that are meant for this purpose. Save the Elwife Brook could benefit immensely from the town's support. Specifically, and here's my laundry list of requests. Communicate with adjacent communities and the MWR A and work with them in addressing the problem. Perhaps revitalize the tri-community group that was effective in addressing the issues. Request information from Somerville and Cambridge about the scope and costs of completing the CSO separation work. Help us to advocate for state and federal funding to address the problem. Provide legal assistance to help us evaluate the current agreements and the upcoming hearings and filings. Provide engineering assistance to help us evaluate the stormwater studies and other technical documents as well as the recent discharges. Please show your support by working with Save the Elwife Brook on this important concern that affects many Arlington residents. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Anderson. And I don't know, maybe you can send this to us later, but one of the things that is coming up at the end of this month is a requirement of the MWR A to, to release a water performance report on the various CSOs. And I think that's the next milestone that is ahead of the MWR A as part of this process. And I think what we're going to find there is that what's going on in Elwife Brook, it far exceeds what they thought for the control year and certainly the, the current conditions as of several years ago. But if I could ask you, maybe at some point the next day or two, two, if you could send us that presentation, the PowerPoint that you had from that presentation, because it does lay out some of the timelines nicely in terms of what's coming up.
Sure, absolutely. And there is actually already a draft of that report that I saw. Unfortunately, it is for the year two thousand nineteen, not twenty twenty-one.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Great to have help understanding it.
Sure. Okay, so why don't I turn to the board now for, for questions or or comments and, and then Mrs. Mahan led us off. So I'll have her go last in the, in the order here, and I'll start with Mr. Helmer.
Thank you. It's nice to sort of meet you in person. And I want, I want you to know my knee is all better. I'm sorry I had to miss the, the walk that you did a few months ago. So if you do another one and after the weather, I would be very happy to go see the show and tell. So thank you for, for doing this. This is, this is tough work. It's a long slog and it is so important. And I'm glad that you are you know, calling out the big, the big factor that's changing and that is the climate, you know, and that, that has blown all the benchmarks, you know, out of the water, so to speak. And I guess my question for you is, first of all, you know, I will certainly have my commitment and I'm sure my colleagues to doing what we can. And, and you know, there's very little that Arlington itself can do, as you, as you have said. Do you have any advice for us about the best leverage that we have and citizens the Commonwealth have to talk to these communities who are in a position to, to spend the federal money to do something about this upstream? You know, what, what's the best leverage that we have to convince them to do the right thing? And to make it a priority?
Well, I, I think that times have changed over the decades and people who live and in Cambridge and in Somerville and the elected officials who represent them have changed their ideas. And I think that the main thing is that we need to let them know that this, they don't, I don't even think they know that this problem exists. I don't even think a lot of Arlington residents remembered that this existed. Because this problem, it's been going on for so long and it's, it's sort of out of sight, out of mind. So I think just bringing it to their attention is, will be helpful. And also understanding some of the, the debate behind it.
Yeah.
And also it, it's really important that we get federal money for this because if we don't get federal money for this, the MWR A has a mechanism to pay for it and that mechanism is to pass the costs along to the ratepayers. Well, the ratepayers in Chelsea and Everett can't afford to pay more for water and they can't afford to pay for sewer infrastructure upgrades in Cambridge and Somerville.
Yeah. Thank, thank you. I'm glad I asked. I think that you, you really raise a good point that the people, the people who bought charge of their own governments, Summer on Cambridge, I think largely will care about this. And so getting the word to them is, is, is a great idea, as well as working with our state delegation. Arlington is fortunate that one of our state representatives also represents part of Cambridge, Mr. Rogers. So, you know, I know he's involved with this and you know, has, has a connection there. So, so yeah, I'll leave it at that. Here are the thoughts and questions from my colleagues and thanks again for your, for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Helmer. Mr. Diggins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Usually I'm all about the questions, me, but, but I know so little and I need to learn a lot before I really have intelligent questions. So I'll just ask a general question. To what extent is this a political problem and to what extent is this a technical problem?
Um, I don't know. Let me answer the, the technical, the technical problem question first. I don't know how much of a technical problem it is. And this is one of the reasons that we're here tonight because if we could better understand the scope and costs of upgrading the sewer infrastructure in Cambridge and Somerville, it would be, it would be really helpful for us to know that. It, these, this sewer system, it's literally over a hundred years old. We have the technology. Arlington has never had CSOs. We have the technology to not be sending pollution, sewage pollution into the Elwife Brook. So but I, but I don't know the scope of it. I don't know how, you know, how much it's going to cost and what kind of technical challenges lie ahead. As far as how, how much of a political problem is it? I don't know how much of a political problem it is with Somerville. I think that Cambridge is going to be helpful. I'm not sure about Somerville. I'd like to think that they'll want to do the right thing, but I'm not sure.
All right.
Okay, so you know how problems that towns have often get pushed off to their edges? That's what's happened here. Cambridge and Somerville have pushed their sewage off to the edge of town. And that I think is, is part of the political problem.
All right. Thank you. I'll, I'll be following up, you know, with the town manager and with the, the new commissioner that we have on the Conservation Commission and with you, you know, so I have a lot of learning to do, you know, and so I look forward to it.
We can get, we can get you up to speed really fast.
You have, I think you have an email address. Send me links, PDFs, everything you got. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Diggins. Mr. Heard?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No move receipt of the presentation if appropriate. And then I would just say that, like Mr. Diggins, I'm certainly not the expert on CSOs on this board. But I am really happy for the presentation. I want to thank Ms. Anderson and Mrs. Mahan for years of advocacy on this issue. And it's something that I can, is definitely piqued my interest and it's something that I'd like to get involved with and learn more about. Because the idea of so untreated sewage in any water body is really disheartening. Never mind. Waterways are so close to Arlington residents that we serve. So I do look forward to having conversations and doing whatever it is that we can do, all be limited, but whatever this board can do to advocate to, against the CSOs, I'm happy to support.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heard. Ms. Mahan, I'm going to make a few comments and then I'll turn it to, to you. This is the end of like that, that, that the first round. And I also want to thank Ms. Anderson and I was familiar to a certain extent about the CSO issue. I've done some research of the past couple of weeks, knowing that this is coming before us. And it's, it is an incredibly complex issue. And this issue, which is related to the Boston Harbor cases that, that were filed in the nineteen eighties, this, this, these cases were, were filed against the MDC at the time and they precipitated the creation of the MWR A in nineteen eighty-four, nineteen eighty-five. And the Federal District Court has actually been supervising this litigation since nineteen eighty-five. And then twenty twenty-one is actually a critical time period for, that, that was a goal to have that, that the long-term control plan implemented and in place and perhaps put an end to the litigation and doesn't look like that's going to be the case because as Ms. Anderson said, I'm just going to cite the Somerville CSO, which this year, that one alone, which is right across from nearby the, the hotel and the home of tweets on the Somerville side of that by the Brook. There's been a discharge in calendar twenty twenty-one of eighteen million gallons, seventeen point ninety million gallons of combined sewage and wastewater into the Elwife Brook from that location. And unfortunately, the MWR A issues quarterly reports as to their progress. And when they issued earlier this year, they said that Somerville of one A, which is that, that, that the sole CSO in Somerville is the sole Elwife Brook outfall that MWR A has forecasted is likely not attaining the long-term control plan and goals by December twenty twenty-one. And that's why this report that's going to come out, I think is so important because it's, they're not going to meet their goals for this one. We feel like they may be meeting goals for the other five that are along Elwife Brook, not completely eliminating them. But as I looked at this and as I talked to Ms. Anderson and did some more research, I, you, part of the problem here is, is, is the cost. And I spoke with Representative Rogers over the weekend and he put it this way, it's not a lack of desire on the community's part. It's a, it's a lack of money to, to, to address these issues. And I think that clearly is the case with Cambridge, with, with they, with, with what they have before them. But I think as a board, this is a unique opportunity to try to work with our state delegation to identify state opera funds because the governor actually was looking to set aside four hundred million dollars for sewer and water infrastructure improvements on the state's allocation of opera. I think that got whittled down to about a hundred and seventy-five million. But I, I think that's clearly an area where we need to work with our delegation. And I'd include Senator, Senator Brownsberger in that. I know he attended your, your session last week, but it seems to me that there's an opportunity to try to improve things through those funds. It's, as you said, a once in a lifetime probably opportunity to do that. You've already advocated to Cambridge to try to use some of their funds to improve their CSOs. And the infrastructure bill, I think, I think again, we've got to reach out to our federal delegation and see what can be earmarked and, and how that comes through. Because I will tell you the, the representatives along the Merrimack River have worked very hard to address CSOs out there. And we've got to try to work collaboratively, in my view, to try to get additional funds to improve the situation. And it's unique because they're not in Arlington. We don't have standing to intervene, but it affects Arlington families. As you said, there's twelve hundred families in the Elwife Brook floodplain that can be affected by this. And certainly something that I think we, we should try to get involved with and, and advocate, but, but try to work collaboratively with our neighbors and with our delegation. And then certainly think we're, we're, we're all willing to do that and really look to what comes out of the MWR A reports at the end of this year because that, that should guide next steps. But with that, I will turn to Mrs. Mahan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And of course, knowing me, I want to overreach on this and probably have ten to twelve different possible avenues we could explore. Now that's not feasible. Not just in terms of cost, but in terms of staff and, and time and allocating that. What I'd like to do after tonight is work with the chair and the town manager. Now that we have that placeholder for Elwife NFTs, outline some if I could put all the ideas down and if anyone else wants to add to it. And then we've already had our goals meeting, but perhaps when we vote, either vote our finalized goal document, maybe have a brief discussion that night to see what if we're advised, pick the top three, pick, pick the top four, it has to be the board that makes that decision and certainly not me. What I'd like to do in the short term is investigate things that are really kind of What I'd like to do in the short term is investigate things that are really kind of low cost and things that were in agreement, whether through tri-community or through MWRA process, which is, and I think some of them, when we had the tri-community working group, it was that was Belmont, Arlington, Cambridge, and we invited Somerville. Went down to try because the then mayor would only send the recreational director and didn't really take us seriously. So, yes, it was a political issue that back then, we just didn't want to deal with it, you know. Which is fine, but I'm encouraged. We have a new mayor in Somerville now. When we would have the tri-county community meetings, it really should be, you know, renamed because it should be the four communities. Cambridge took it very serious. Then it was a little bit of a political issue, but it was mostly a revenue issue and with Cambridge and with MWRA. But they said Owen O'Reilly, who I believe is still the DPW director, who is fantastic. And he always did everything he could, recognizing that. So they're definitely more receptive to it now. I mean, I felt Cambridge was open, but it was kind of still a political issue. And I agree now is is the time to strike on that. But the other thing is, is if town council, I know he's already started investigating this, can look into what they're already in violation of, you know, it's supposed to be a process that we get notified when there is a CSO discharge. Somerville, I think, recently really messed up on one, and I think it was cited, you know, but was after the fact. The other thing that MWRA and then MDC and now DCR was part of the previous agreement was they're supposed to be, and I know it sounds silly, it's supposed to be signage up so that when people walk by, they don't just see CSO one A. We and what happened was MWRA and then MDC and now DC, well, no, DC out. They just didn't want to do it. So the town of Arlington ended up doing it. But then when DCR, and I'm blanking on the planner's name, Dan something, because I just, I just have a block on that. You all know why. When he went down there, took all the signs down that Arlington had put up that DCR was supposed to have there, and he's refused to put them up. So that's like a short-term thing, because I think once people have knowledge, like Mr. Diggins said, you know, I'm hearing this and I want to know more, but a lot of people don't even know what the issue is. So, um, so moving forward, I'd like the board to have a discussion around our strategy for the Niptys permit process, because we do have a role in that. That involves planning, involves the board. I'd like to, as we discussed at our goals meeting, explore EPA. Look into, we didn't say this, but if there's anything on the current Boston Harbor Clean Act, definitely want to revitalize in some form what we used to call the tri-county committee with a different name. But I know now Senator Brown's, I mean, I started it with members of the Sanj Kneeburge Committee, which I think you were in on that too, Kristin, with George Lake, Elsie, Elsie Fury and Will Brownsberger, who was then a select board member. So I guess I would ask the chair if he could just ask the staff to include in board materials just a roster of who was on that tri-county community group. And where everyone seems receptive to this, I will say, with all due respect, Somerville and Cambridge, if you look at their revenues, not even looking at the opera money, this money there, as well as looking at state opera funding. So, uh, those, I guess, would be my first thoughts. And then just continuing to work with my colleagues, the manager and and town council about maybe by whatever meeting we have the final draft report of our goals. If something can be crafted of things we actually can do legally, you know, there may be things that, no, there's no relief in Clean Water Act. So don't put that on. So that would be our premises, start working through the chair and everybody else and get our game plan for, I think we have like four different areas that we should focus in on. But I'm not the person to to guide that, because it's it's the select board. It's not Mahan selects. So, um, and my colleagues have the chair, who's also an attorney. He can, you know, run circles around me on that stuff. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Mahan. And and I think we will, you put this on, you know, of regular instances. We'll we'll put this on our agenda for talking about. I may create a subcommittee and and talk to, and you may talk to Mrs. Mahan about that or talk to other members and and working on that going forward and come back before the board. But I I think there are a number of areas that we can get information to the board. We can look at some of these dates coming up where I I think there's a public comment period in February for the report that's going to be issued in December. So that would be a time period to 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 do work on comment, but and really work with that delegation too. But so Mr. Diggins's hand go up, Mr. Diggins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And it's kind of based on your your comments, me and and this is my hot and and Mrs. Anderson. So roughly, how much would it cost to solve this problem?
I I I think it's an originally, the the Elway Brook area was looked at as it was, I think originally twelve CSOs, now it's down to six. There's four that are in Cambridge, one that's operated by MWRA and one by the city of Somerville. And I think the original estimate for the whole Elway Brook area, and this is going back a couple decades, was over a hundred and twelve million dollars. I don't know, and I think Ms. Anderson and I spoke about this recently, what the cost is for any particular one CSL, but I think it's related to the entire system. So it's hard to get a handle on that within the documents. And I think that's something that we need to try to take a look at. But that's that's one of the reasons why the these variances have been granted too. Because one of the criterias for a variance is that the cost to correct this issue, and 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 this isn't my personal view, but the cost to correct it outweighs the benefit, okay? And and that's that seems cruel when you're downstream and and subject to flooding. But that is one of the criteria in the regulations. Attorney Hand, did you want to add anything to that or?
I'm sorry, Mr.
Oh, your hand go up and then, okay.
I I this has been a very full-throated conversation. The level of detail that I offer is probably not appropriate for this particular moment. So I'll 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 look forward to working with all the folks from Save the Elway and the board and and the manager as well as a lot of our terrific staff who know a lot about this issue as well.
Okay, yeah. And I I don't, Ms. Anderson, you and I had that conversation the other day about trying to get a better handle on costs. And maybe this is, in the short term, making incremental changes too, and getting using opera funds to make incremental changes. I I, you know, we don't know the answer to that yet. We 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 need to 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 learn more about it and encourage, I I would say the MWRA as much as anybody to to get involved in this, because they control a lot of the reporting.
That was very helpful. Thank you. I'm sorry, Ms. Anderson.
Oh, no, I I think, Mr. Diggins, you're absolutely right to be asking the question of how much it's going to cost. And that's one of the questions that we have that hasn't yet been answered. And we're hoping that the town can help us to find out what that is. Because we're pretty confident that Cambridge knows how much it will cost to separate their sewers and close their CSOs. And Somerville, I think, also knows. So it it's maybe a matter of reaching out in a friendly way and asking them, I don't, or maybe we, the town council could FOIA them, use the use Freedom of Information Act. But I think that takes a really long time and it would be good to know. Because if we knew how much it was going to cost, then we would know how much money we're asking for. For, you know, federal or state funds to pay for it. It seems it's a it's a crucial question. Thank you for asking that.
Thanks.
Attorney Hand, did?
Yeah, I I this I do think I can provide a little bit more discreet sort of feedback on. So I think that one way to think about it is, these are really sort of connected ecosystems of of permits. It's not just the Niptys permit, it's the MS four permit. It's a lot of interrelated things. And so part of I think what the community's experience in responding to, this Mahan and this Anderson have both raised is that in the original projections for what the CSO control plan would achieve didn't necessarily anticipate the impacts of climate change and more extreme weather events. So part of the cost calculation that we'll have to be thoughtful about is not just the actual infrastructure for the CSOs themselves, where sewer and stormwater intersect into basically a single pipe and then has an outfall. But also, what are the things that Cambridge, Somerville, even Arlington can continue to do? I know we've already done a lot of great work on this to absorb stormwater, which I think both Ms. Mahan and Ms. Anderson alluded to. So there's a sort of holistic vision of how to reduce stormwater, which aids the reduction in CSO discharge. And then there's the actual infrastructure of the sewer outflows themselves, where they combine with stormwater. So it's it's, just so folks know, there's sort of these intersecting costs and strategies that can come together. And I think what I'm hearing from Mrs. Mahan and other members of the board is that you'd like to have as comprehensive a set of considerations and strategy that both involve holding CSO permit holders accountable, but also trying to support the necessary political action to allocate resources to help. So I I I'll be happy to work with manager and select board to outline what the sort of boundary lines are between some of those things.
Thank you.
Attorney Hand, yeah. And and one other thing I'll just add, I mean, this, again, is still being supervised by by Judge Sterns, a federal district court judge, and it's part of a much larger piece of litigation that that dealt with Boston Harbor pollution and the rebuilding of the Deer Island Treatment Plant and then the movement of 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 wastewater from the South Shore to Deer Island. And this is a, while it's an important piece, it's a it's a smaller piece, but it also makes it more difficult to find what specifically is going on with with the Elway Brook area, because you will see updates that are sent into the court. And there'll be updates about Elway, but it will be updates about what's going on in the Charles River, what's going on in various areas. So it's very complex. But I mean, I think we can start digging through that a little bit to get to get more information. But again, in the short term, I do see an opportunity here to try to advocate for funds directed to it. It's a little unusual, because it's, we really want to advocate for funds to be spent in a different jurisdiction, but it's to our benefit that it happens. Okay, Mrs. Mahan? Just I just need to, you have the mute button.
I'm exhausted. I would ask through the chair, the town manager, I know we have two of our conservation commission members at our meeting here tonight. Thank you, Ms. Schwartz. You didn't have to stay, but I'm thrilled that you did. I would like to, either the chair or the town manager, reach out to Conservation Commission and see. Previously, with this process, fifteen, twenty years, Conservation Commission had a very active role. But I'm not going to pretend to tell them what it is, what role they should be playing, because things have changed. I know there's a water body subcommittee there. So whatever's the appropriate way through the chair or town manager to ask the chair of the Conservation Commission first, if appropriate. And if so, when appropriate, let them know, maybe the two chairs, Mr. DeCoursey and Conservation Commission Chair, can speak and say, you know, the select board is coming up with an action plan around this event, around these different per- permits and processes. Please tell us what role you all should play and could play, so that we all work in concert together. And, you know, I'm not going into an area that's already being covered with people with far more expertise on the Conservation Commission, and I could really mess it up. So however we can get that done, you know, the answer is, which I don't think will be, there's nothing, Conservation Commission has no role. I would accept that, but I know there isn't. So I just want that coordinated. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will not raise my hand again.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan. And and I I will talk to Mr. Chaplin this week about that as a as a follow-up. And we will, we will continue to to discuss this as a board. And like I said, we create a subcommittee type structure too. Mr. Helmut?
I thank you. I just wanted to second my colleague, Mr. Hurd's motion of receipt of the report and add my gratitude for a good discussion.
Great, thank you. Okay, any further discussion from the board? Okay, so on the motion for receipt by Mr. Hurd that was seconded by Mr. Helmut, Attorney Hand?
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Danz?
Yes.
Mr. Helen?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes, and thank you, everyone.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Anderson, for your work and for the presentation tonight. We will continue to talk with you.
Thanks so much for your time, everybody.
Okay, so moving on to correspondence received, we have three items. Item fifteen, parking concerns in the vicinity of Arlington High School. Item sixteen, reading of land acknowledgement at select board meetings. And item seventeen, notice, town manager vacation buyback. Mr. Hurd?
I'll move receipt.
Thank you. Mr. Diggins?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Helmut. Support that. And I wonder, do we, would we want to re refer the parking letter to the town manager for appropriate action?
Yes, comment.
Thank you. Mrs. Mahan?
No questions, thank you.
I don't have any questions either. So on a motion by Mr. Hurd, seconded by Mr. Diggins, Attorney Hand?
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Helmut?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes. Okay, new business. Attorney Hand?
None of business, thank you.
You, Mr. Chaplin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a few quick pieces of new business. One, I wanted to thank Mike Rodamacher and the whole team at DPW for, very quickly after getting the approvals from Mast dot for putting out some of the temporary measures and signage on Chestnut Street. I know we heard from a resident under open forum about the continued urgency. But DPW worked hard to get signs up as well as putting up the temporarily temporary bollards, and I wanted to thank them for that. I also wanted to follow up with the board to let you all know that, I know, I believe at the board's last full meeting, concern about the placement of the Blue Bike Station in Arlington Center, behind Uncle Sam Plaza, was expressed. We have found a new location. We're going to put it back in the parking lot, which will ultimately still be a temporary location, but we will be able to barricade it such that it can stay there throughout the winter, so that there can be used throughout the winter months of the system. I will notify the butter, as well as the butter's attorney, of that. We won't be able to move it until the first or second week of January, based on when blue bikes can actually get out to move it. But we do have a plan now to remove it from its current location. And then finally, I'm sure by now we've all read the news, but I did want to mention that Mayor Wu announced this morning in Boston that the city of Boston would be requiring proof of vaccination status for entrance into restaurants, gyms or fitness centers or entertainment venues. There's a number of other communities in the greater Boston region that are considering the same. We have started discussions with our Health and Human Services staff, as well as a brief discussion under new business at last week's Board of Health meeting. No decisions have been made. Ultimately, I think over the course of the next few weeks, we will have a series of discussions trying to figure out what is best for Arlington residents and Arlington businesses. Speaking here tonight, I would say how we end up recommending from a staff point of view might very much rely on what Cambridge does. If Cambridge imposes such a requirement, it may in fact create a barrier for our businesses if they're not requiring the same, given people's choices. But there's a lot to work through. I the thing I want to make clear is, it's being considered, but no decisions have been made. And ultimately, recommendations will be formulated based on what what we think is in the best interest of Arlington residents and businesses. And that's all I had from the business tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chaplin. Mr. Helmut?
Thank you. I just have one brief brief item, and this is really a heads up on some new business that I think maybe before the board in the future. I've heard from a number of residents about some increased concerns in some recent close calls in the Wachusett-Napleton Street intersection of of late. And I mean, this happened because a town meeting member I happen to know really well wrote to me and I was responsive. And and he encouraged a few other people to write to me, and they've been in touch with the Select Board Office. We were not able to get this on tonight's agenda in time, but fortunately, I'm grateful to the chair and Uh but unfortunately, I'm grateful to the chair and Mr. De Corsi for uh expressing interest in that, I believe, is planning. To put that on our agenda at a future meeting, perhaps as early as next month. Um so so I appreciate those who wrote wrote to me to the select board office and 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 know that we will take a close look at that when we enter next opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Helmuth. Uh Mr. Diggins.
No new business. Happy New Year, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Diggins. Mr. Hurd.
Uh no new business, Mr.
Okay, uh Mrs. Mahan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um. My new business is the town manager's new business. Um uh regarding the Board of Health. Um I know they, I now know that they've had a meeting and it sounds like they may have a meeting or two in the future. And I know there are times they activate their. List of businesses, um email or whatever. Um so if um. It's already been done and or it's going to be done again, that there'll be a meeting to to um not only get feedback or test the temperature. Um from these businesses because it's it's getting, so I can't really go in many. Establishments in Arlington to A, get a sense, but also. Provide some information because I think a lot of it is just people don't have all the information. So when you don't, sometimes it's a reaction to. Expect the worst. So um and that may already be in the works. So I'm I'm just reiterating the obvious, but. Uh I'm getting a lot of, how come I didn't know? But then I've gotten, well, I did get an email and I'm like, you should read it. It's all I'm assuming. Um and then also I've had Chestnut Street down there. Um I don't know if um the chair or the town manager can possibly reach out to Ms. Verone. Um and let her know that, you know, the board discussed this at our goals meeting. We also put that in um under transportation. As part of our joint goal with the town manager that these improvements, signage and temporary bollards have been made. And this future ones um to be determined whether it's a legal issue. That we have to clear or it's a seasonal issue that we have to wait for. So I'll leave it to the chair and and the town manager on how to um. Make sure she gets that information only because God bless her. Uh you know, she's not at the meeting when we got to this point and not that she should be. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan. And I have a couple pieces of uh new business. First, uh last Friday, Mrs. Mahan and I attended. The Long Range Planning Committee meeting, presided over the Long Range Planning Committee meeting. Um and we um. Are still in what I would call a discussion phase. We've got to get to an action phase pretty soon and um. There is another meeting scheduled for January seventh and and one of the. Issues that came up, we thought we might hit preliminary revenue estimates from the state in advance of last Friday's meeting. We did not have that. So. There will be some preliminary revenue numbers that will um help guide us on on January seventh, but. Ee we are facing deficit, significant def- projected deficits in fiscal years twenty-five and twenty-six. Right now, we show a deficit, a projected deficit of about one point three million dollars in fiscal twenty-four. That needs to be eliminated. And I think there's agreement. That that needs to be eliminated so that the first year that we see a deficit is twenty-five, but we're getting to the point where, as I said, we need action and and um. We're hoping that that happens through dialogue uh between the members, the two members, Mrs. Mahan and I on. The select board, we've got school committee members, we've got finance committee members and um we're we're the town manager and his staff as well. That um we'll see some, we'll we'll see some movement because it it's just every month that passes. Without reaching consensus is makes it that much more difficult to take action as you get closer to a deficit period. So. We'll keep the board posted on that. Um a- after the next meeting, as I said, which is on January seventh. Um I thank Mr. Helmuth for the update on Wachusett Avenue and and Appleton, and I will be putting on in addition to that. In January, we had talked about having a attack update, if you will, in terms of what's happening with items that we refer to tech. That I'm hoping to do that for January tenth. It's either going to be the tenth or the second meeting in January, but I think it's appropriate because we. We get asked from time to time, as I said, what what happened to that item that you referred and and TAC is doing great work. But I think it's it's good for them. It's good for us to 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 know the status. Um last thing I want to say, it's getting near the end of the year. Um I've had a lot of discussions with my family, friends, supporters, and um I have made a decision that I I will be a candidate. Uh for reelection to the select board this April. Um and I and I hope to have the opportunity to continue to serving the town and uh and with you. Fellow members of the board. Um so with that, that concludes my new business and um. Thought it was a really great meeting tonight, just reinforces my decision um um to do that. So thank you, everybody, and um. Uh we'll take a motion to adjourn.
What's adjourned?
Okay, okay, motion by Mr. Diggins, seconded by Mr. Hurd, Attorney Hand.
Mr. Hurd.
Yes.
Mr. Diggins.
Yes.
Mr. Helen.
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan.
Mr. Chair, thank you for the bestest last new business news I've heard in a long time. Yes.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan.
Mr. De Corsi.
Yes, for me.
So now, Miss Phil.
Okay, happy holidays, everyone.
Happy holidays, folks.
Happy holidays, everybody. Thank you.